Alright, so it's time to call the Conservation Commission Special Meeting to Order. That's 6:33 at Torrington City Hall on 215. Present, we have Aaron Stelma, Jeremy Spitz, George Craig, Steve Iveyne, Amsoo, we have Dan McGinnis, and Karen Specks, and myself, Christine Altman, and our staff member Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner. The first order of business is to accept the October 19th regular meeting minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes, beautifully written by Nate Nardi Cyrus.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next order of business, no new business, old business, we have the landscaping zoning regulation amendment.
Before we get to that, I'd like to propose a new, small new business thing. Steve, great news that he's been elected to City Council, so it's really wonderful. But in his absence, the seat of Vice Chair is again open. So I'd suggest taking a two-thirds vote to add to the agenda, a new election for Vice Chair, and it might even be a good idea to do Secretary, not that they would do anything, just as a third in line, just so the order of, you know, who's running meetings is clear.
We have a motion?
You can mark them.
Okay, so we have a motion to add Vice Chair and Secretary to the agenda under new business, now have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, motion carries, alright.
I just want to make a statement that as Vice Chair for the one month period, I'm honored. Appreciate for all, thank you.
Fantastic job, beautiful. Sorry to miss you, you're leaving.
Wait, you won't be coming to these meetings anymore, or?
Yeah, I'll just haunt you in the background sort of.
Are you, are you done? Are you able to be on the?
No, I suspect that, yeah.
Yeah, we looked and knew that.
Yeah, both, yeah.
Yeah.
You do good stuff for us in City Council, that's.
Well, we'll try.
Yeah, hopefully, congratulations on your election, Dan.
Thank you, thank you.
Or Steve, sorry. He should have been nominated for VP.
Alright, did we, I didn't, I didn't hear, was there a motion for nomination? Okay, do we have a suggestion?
Dan, you're kind of like the obvious choice, because you're seasoned.
Excuse me?
I said you're kind of the obvious choice for Vice Chair because you're seasoned.
And your fish tank behind you makes it for me.
That's actually bon air, but anyway. Yeah, okay. As long as I don't have to do anything.
I'll make sure the minute.
You might have to run a meeting now and then.
I'll make sure the minutes reflect that you don't want to do anything. Not help to that.
Dan, neither do I. So do we have a motion?
A motion to accept Dan as VP?
And I will second.
Okay. Vice Chair, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries, congratulations, Dan.
Yeah.
How about for Secretary?
Now Secretary basically doing what you're doing.
No, I can still take minutes, Secretary is just another title, but it's basically third in line. So if you're not here, and Dan's not here, you know, whoever was there could run the meeting.
You don't nominate my soul for that? I'm the next most senior person, oh no, Karen, you want to do it?
No, that's okay, if you're willing, certainly.
Real good volunteers too often.
Yeah, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright. Alright, so next, the landscaping zoning regulation amendment.
Okay, so we had had a lot of dialogue about this at the last meeting, which is really good. Before I kind of get into reporting out on everything that I was supposed to do and figuring out what our next steps are here, I talked to Jeremy, what he's looking for, if the Commission is supportive of this, we don't necessarily have to have a motion from you during this meeting. What's going to happen is, if generally everyone's supportive of it well enough to be able to easily pass a motion at a future meeting, then what would happen would be, we would all kind of, you know, you would vote and agree on whether or not you, you know, you thought it was acceptable, and then it would go to Jeremy, Life was the planner, he would put it on the agenda, kind of tweak it up, put it on the agenda, and then when it went in front of planning and zoning in February, it would get referred to Conservation, because it's a Conservation-related topic. And then we would have this discussion again, but it wouldn't have to be that long, just looking at the exact language itself. And then we would do a letter, I could do it, or we could, someone, you know, that could come in the chair, making a recommendation, and then that would go into the report and be read into the minutes for the actual adoption of the regulation change. So, so it doesn't have to actually be a full motionist meeting, but everyone should kind of be on the same page, just to make sure that.
Like, is there any reason not?
No, it'll make it clean, so there's no reason not to.
Okay. Just, should we have a little discussion on that, because was there any more discovery? There was concern about small business costs.
Yeah.
To comply with the non-native species, is there any more thoughts on that?
I looked up on Home Depot, sorry, Home Depot Low and Lowe's, and they have native trees readily available. Yeah, I mean, it depends on the tree, but like, for example, it's between seventy-five million dollars a tree.
Yeah, and so I did a little thing too on Home Depot, they actually have a price comparison, which is really nice. So we have red maple shade tree and eastern red bud, both of those native, and I tried to find like, kind of comps. We have this flowering cherry tree that's non-native, it's the comp for this, and then the red maple, this is a Norway maple, which is a little cheaper.
But Norway maple's not, yeah, that's a non-native.
It's a non-native, it's invasive as well, so we really would not prefer that, but. So, you know, this isn't comprehensive, it's just, I did that just quick.
What's the?
Four dollar difference?
It's a ten, it's a ten dollar difference.
Ten dollar difference?
Yeah. But again, I mean, it doesn't mean you couldn't all do all red maple, well, alright, that's just for red maple, but there were other options, you could only compare four, so.
I saw a bunch of natives on them.
There were, there were, there was quite a bit.
So it's not like it's, you don't have to go to a special place to get it?
Yeah, it's readily available and pricing.
Yeah, there's.
Any like difference here?
The cost, you know, the cost of most landscaping, I mean, you know, when you're talking about over a hundred dollars a square foot for a building, then you're talking, you know, a few hundred bucks for trees. It's, it's not a significant amount of money. You know, even if it was, even if it was, even if the native plants were more expensive, it still wouldn't make, make much of a difference.
Yeah, the concern that I brought up is, I just went through the process of doing a farm stand, and farms, it isn't projected to make much money. But my, my farm stand would be like rolled into something like that, and as it was, engineering added additional requirements outside, how would I word this, outside of what was required by the regulations on the books.
Right, the engineering, it was a.
So they significantly added thousands of dollars to my ability to put a farm stand on my, on my property, and this would just add additional cost to a project like that, for someone who's small, that's doing something like a farm stand. So that was my concern, I'm seeing like, little businesses go out of business in town, left and right, and it's like, I hate seeing people open up and die because they're not, I just want to make it more feasible and more appetizing for small business to come in and thrive. It's not easy to, startup costs are expensive, I just, I know this is nominal, but when you talk about small business, it's not defined, what is include, or what's included for a new business and what's not, and when I asked, a farm stand, would it be included in that?
Well, the thing that would be included is that if you plant, if you're required to plant, that it's native. Right, so it's a fifteen dollar difference, is that going to make or break?
No.
Sure.
Sorry, I just, I wasn't here for the last discussion. So, it's the, specifically, they want to pass a law saying that businesses, it's a requirement that any landscaping, any plants have to be needed?
So right now, it's recommended, right?
Recommended.
It's recommended for the frontage.
Yeah, so they want to change it to acquired.
It's not for the entire property, it's for the, the stuff that's road frontage, correct?
Yeah, there's, it's road frontage, if you're doing extensive parking, so parking greater than fifteen parking spaces would require every fifteen spaces, there need to be a landscaped island, so that would have to be.
That's been there for years.
Yeah.
But, but it's all landscaping, not just trees?
It's, it's all landscaping that's required as a part of the regulation, so, example would be, so the regulation requires for every forty linear feet, it's one tree and five shrubs. If you're going to plant daylilies or something like that, that's not a part of the regulation, so you don't have to get native plants for any of your like flower beds or anything like that. This is just for the, the actual plant required planting material.
So that regulation is in place now, and it says that there's a recommendation, so it said should, you know, native plants should be used, and it's going to be changed to native plants shall be used.
So, why only the front, like, why not all the property, what, what is it that we're trying to, I mean, I love native plants, and I truly am a tree owner, I actually own trees, but, but why, like, what, why say just the front has to be native and not the rest of the property, or why not residential?
Because it's not just.
What are we trying to solve?
It's everything that's in the regulation, so with those, the regulation covers, I mean, basically, I may be forgetting a couple small points, but parking, so like I said, those parking islands, that would be under there, so that's in the interior of the property. There's the road frontage, and then there's for businesses operating outside of a residential zone, but adjacent to one, they have to do a buffer, like, they may be required to do a screened buffer, so that there is some, you know, they would be imposed on that as well, if it was adjacent to a residential zone.
But I think his question is why not everything, but we, you know, I don't know that anyone can regulate all of the plantings that someone puts in, right?
Right.
I don't think they should, I'm, I'm just wondering, like, what is it that, that they're trying to solve? Like, I know native plant, like, I always try to plant native plants, and I, I try to plant them natural, I let, just whatever grows, grows, and I just, you know, what I don't want, so I, I get the native planting, but to just pass more laws, what is it specifically trying to stop, just to try to get?
Well, it's so, right, so it's basically like, the same number of plants, it's not changing the requirement for planting, so you like, still would have to put the same number of plants. Right now, the way it's regulated, we encourage, so I, in my applications, everyone, I recommend native plants to every single application that comes through that makes this requirement, and in the, you know, year and a half I've been here, I haven't heard any pushback from that, from anyone.
Well, I love the recommendation.
People are doing it anyway.
I guess my concern is, my concern is with the law creep, where, like, for instance, like, most roses are not native. So, you know, it's like, yeah, it's just trees in the front and shrubs, but then what if somebody wants to plant like a currant, a lot of currants, or, you know, that's a fruit, and it grows well here, you know, and then where, where would it stop, would it eventually go to, you know, ten years down the road, would it eventually go to residential? And it doesn't, it doesn't seem like just the frontage or whatever, the regulation would solve any, you know, like, the, like, the Japanese knotweed kills me, every time I'm driving down the street, I see it, and it makes me so mad, and then I see them spraying chemicals down the side of the street to kill it, I'm just more mad. So I'm, I'm like all for not planting invasive species that are not native here, but if it's, if it's passing a law that doesn't really solve problem like getting.
Well, it's missing up in the right direction, you know, it's certainly, you know, we have to do as much as we can to, to, I mean, if we're the Conservation Commission, that's part of our, you know, kind of our core being, is we want to steer people in the right direction, and that would, you know, you can't, all, all of the non-native.
Your concern, what's your concern?
My concern is, like, for instance, I have currants and roses on my property.
Fine.
That's not native. So, although I'm all for native plants, if the government starts making laws that you can't plant, I don't even mind if they, like, specifically say, like, the Norway maple, that's very invasive, so don't play with that. I don't mind that, but if they, if they make up a blanket law that you only are allowed to plant, then what if, what if a business wants to plant, like I said, a currant, or, or roses in the front, or something like that, now, now they're not allowed to? And it's also just more regulation, where they, they have to make sure they follow every rule, and the rules just stack up, and it gets overwhelming.
We talked about, a little bit about this last meeting, that there is also already laws on the books, I guess, at a state level on invasive species.
Invasive species.
If someone were to put a new business in, they, they'd have to remove the invasive plants, so, I mean, there's already, you know, boxes, like, there's boundaries around what we can and can't do.
Like, I would rather do, like, personally pay some money and do a fundraiser to pay for native plants or something, like, something to, to.
You would rather do a fundraiser to pay?
For a commercial application?
No.
For businesses, their plants for them?
I'd rather that than passing laws saying you can't plant.
So it's not saying that they can't plant non-native species. So if they wanted to have flower beds in the front, if they want to have more than their five shrubs and one tree per, I mean.
Yeah, well, this is, this is the minimum landscaping requirement, so we don't.
So if they wanted to do more, they can do more, that's not.
Right.
No one's preventing them from planting those other.
Then what, so then what's the purpose that they're allowed to plant?
Who encouraged planting of native species?
Yeah, it's a guideline to.
So, 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 like, like, I guess, what I feel like the point you're getting at is, so, so if we get an application in, and it says, you know, Norway maple for the front, like, two trees Norway maple to meet this specification, and, you know, six burning bush or something, or five burning bush to meet that, you know, we'll say as well, there's, there's native alternatives that are comparable in price, like, that aren't invasive, like, you know, I, I can't say what it's not, it is, I mean.
I mean, like, well, we're the Conservation Commission.
Yes.
If you want to advocate for small businesses, maybe in a long commission, so our, what is our mission? What's our mission to be here?
I, I kind of agree with him in that, I feel like if we're trying to protect pollinators, so, I, I mean, have we discussed what we're spraying on our roads? Have we discussed the LED lighting that might be throwing off certain rhythms of animals, like, I mean, I feel like there's just.
So, yes, we actually.
Much bigger issues that could be tackled than.
Come up this for us, where, you know, like, there are wet ones projects, where that has to come before us, when there's going to be a project on our, you know, area where there's certain spraying that's happening, state roads is where spray, a lot of spray is occurring for that, and we have nothing to do with that, that's not our purview.
Right, but if we're putting native plants and then we're spraying the, the roads, and this is road frontage, I mean, are we adding?
Yeah. One of the things is, all you're doing.
Does the native plants have to do with spraying?
Well, because, I mean, the whole point of putting native plants is really to support pollinators, right? Am I, am I missing something?
What's a dial back that usually, they don't want a native species, right? Because we're over.
If we're talking about road frontage, landscaping, and then it's by a roadside, I just feel like there's bigger.
That.
You're talking to tackle.
Well, if we want to talk about other topics at another meeting, that's fine, but I, I feel like you're kind of convoluting the, the topic at hand.
Well, I guess my concern is, there, there are already so many laws, and to add another law and another regulation to follow, when I don't see it actually solving any problem, like, yes, it would be nice that the few people who choose to plant a tree, and they might have chosen a Norway maple, will now plant a red maple instead, like, again, that's a benefit, but it doesn't seem like it's worth adding more.
Okay, and you're saying you don't get pushed.
I actually, I'm gonna hold on.
Most people are happy with it.
How much to order, one moment here. How many seeds does a Norway maple put out? Thousands, thousands a year, so if you have a commercial business that's next to state land, now that, now you have the boundaries of that land being overrun with an invasive species, so to say that it solves no problems is a gross, like, exaggeration of, of, it solves huge problems. To, to be limiting the number of, of non-native, and, and right now, we know what some of the invasives are, but there are some that we don't, there's issues with, there's, it's more than just pollinators, it's our bird species, which are incredibly, they're under incredible strain. It's, it's the, it's the animals who are using different corridors, what, what they have available to them, so.
I'm all for that.
Right, so, don't say, though, that there's no benefit, because we wouldn't do it if there was no benefit.
I guess.
And there's.
There's no big hardship to the people that were asking to, to do it, so I, I don't see why there's such negativity, I mean.
I don't have, I don't have negativity towards planting native species, I just have negativity towards just more regulation.
But it's.
Regulations have been on, on the books, in terms of landscaping, for more than thirty years.
But, but if they can plant a Norway maple right next door, or right in their backyard, or in their.
But you don't.
Or in their private property, or, like.
You know, they could plant, once they hit the minimum requirement on the frontage and everything else for the, you know, native species, the, they're, what they're required to plant, they could then turn around and take a whole piece of the property and plant Norway maples, if they wanted to.
But that's my point, though.
No, they're not going to, because it's going to cost them money.
Or too much, or too much, what, what's, okay, too many laws. So, you know, I think that the issue is, is the people who can't do more than the minimum, right, that's who we're trying to protect? Meaning.
I think she was talking about small businesses, I mean, that's what, that's what I brought up, just because there was no definition on new business. This is a new business.
But how many commercial businesses are going to have a piece of property in the backyard, behind their business, I mean, is, is, I mean, very few do, besides the dumpsters.
But it's already getting pushed back already, and most people are willingly doing it under the recommended, and it's like.
Well, I think part of it is.
Value is it adding?
Well, the part that I see as value-added is that, you know, I, I have a background in forestry, and bore culture, and like, conservation and all this stuff, and I put a lot of time, more than I think most people in my position would, in like, finding like, selections of species, so I have a list of like, commercially available species that are native, that I kind of keep going based on what commercial, or, because a lot of times, most of these applications come in from the landscapers, they've been subbed out, and they're the ones who we're working with, because the, the property owner is just like, solve this for me, and try to keep it in budget, you know, that's, that's, so, I guess, the, what I see is that if someone else were to come to my position, they're not going to put nearly as much time into it, and if it doesn't require it, then.
And to that point, you were saying that, you know, say, you know, we, we implement this, and this new business, two to five years down the road, those plants die or whatever, and they throw other plants in, there's nobody going back, and like, oh, that, those native plants are put back in, or what, there's no going back to like, assure that those native species are still there, so it's just another le- level of management that for someone like you or your predecessor, like, I just don't see that being kept up.
We're, we're taking a step in the right direction, and all these little steps, you know, add up and make a difference, and I, it's not harming anyone, and you can call it another law, another regulation, but it's, it's worthwhile, and it's not, you know, we're not causing any hardship that, that, you know.
Do we have any data on new businesses that are put in, what's the average new business that's put into Torrington a year, where they're clearing and building, and, I, I mean.
Were they, were they subject to the regulation, you mean?
Right, how many of those are in culture a year?
I don't know, I probably have ten, fifteen landscaping, because anytime there's a significant enough change, like, let's say they're redoing the parking lot, right, they may not be rebuilding the building, but they're redoing the parking lot, resurfacing, not just resurfacing, but reorienting it, then it would have to be compliant with current regulations, because if it's, if it existed prior to regulations, then it's grandfathered in. So there's certain modifications under a property that will trigger the landscaping regulation. Yeah, and one other point, just to, not to throw in another thing into the mix, but I did talk to Jeremy, because another point we had brought up in the last meeting was this idea of potential exemption, or some way to get to your concern about small business and farms and things like that, and so Jeremy agreed with me and was supportive of adding a farm exemption to the landscaping regulation, so exempting, right now, we only have farm stands and farms as farm businesses, or as farm uses, so we could easily add that in as a section in the, in the beginning, that farm uses are exempted, which I feel that, like, you know, a farm setting is usually, you know, has a lot of.
I use my farm just because that was my, my experience, but I mean, I know people that work out of their homes.
Right.
And they've had to put in small parking lots and stuff, and it's like, they live there and they work there, and.
Well, if they work out of their home, they're not going to be required to do landscaping.
When we talked about this last meeting, it, you guys said something along the lines of, if they had to do any major, it's like she had to put a parking lot in, of this one person that I can recall.
Okay.
Uh, she has a home business, she lives upstairs, business downstairs, but she was required to put in, I think, a parking lot with, I don't know, five spaces or something like that, so there was, you know, significant road frontage change, I mean.
Right.
But she has a small residential lot.
Right.
With someone like her being subjected.
Uh, it, it depends.
She does have like, her little home gardens and stuff there, I mean, and that's the kind of, that's the kind of stuff, these little businesses are really our lifeblood of our community, and it just, it says, I know it sounds stupid, but if nobody is pushing back on you on, under a recommended, I don't see making it required that much more beneficial.
Okay, so with that discussion, I'd like to recommend a call and vote, and I have a motion for a vote.
Alright.
Yeah, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay.
Beat you too.
So, all in favor?
Oh, good.
So, okay, so this, so the motion is to, is to put in place the zoning regulation amendment from should to shall.
There, there's other things, in the regulation update, every, everything else is kind of context language, like, what's the purpose of this, is it to fight climate change, to incre- it's just kind of updates the, the benefits of landscaping in general. And then there's also.
To reduce the urban heat island effect, otherwise improve the quality of life of the city residents by providing shade, reducing noise, improving aesthetics, fostering biodiversity, enhancing storm groundwater management to mitigate the impacts of climate change through prudent management of natural resources, and wildlife habitat and general requirements. Use of invasive plants or successor Connecticut invasive plant, plants council or successor organization, or the use of species native shall be prohibitive, and the use of species native to northeastern United States is required.
But the number of plants doesn't change.
No, right.
Protection zone shall be defined by a recognized arborist or municipal tree warden after trees.
That was just an expansion from arborists to include tree warden, that's another position that.
Let's see, there's in blue farms and farmers' roadside stands shall be exempted from all landscaping requirements. And buffer requirements. This is the added language to reduce the urban heat island effect, enhance biodiversity and wildlife habitat. Where existing trees or their vegetation are removed prior to the filling of, or sorry, the filing of a zoning application, the Commission may require the planting of the largest commercially available trees or shrubs to replace them. And that's, those are the recommended changes to the regulation. So we, you okay with that motion? On second?
Yes. Can I get it, I'm sorry to convolute this, to make one more point, um, not a point, but just specific here, so as a part of this, of this revision, a key provision would be removed, invasive plants shall be removed in areas where pre-development vegetation is being left in place. So we felt that that was really onerous, and kind of insane to require all invasive plants removed where pre-development vegetation is left.
Covered by any state.
No, so that's basically saying, like, you have a, let's say you have a little storefront, and you have five acres in the back, right?
All full of multi-floor.
It's awful, multi, this is saying that the planning and zoning can require that all that multi-floor throws be removed.
We're taking that out.
Insane. Never required applicant to do that, so that would be, that's part of it.
I'd tell you a positive, I can't get out of my yard.
Okay, so we have a mark, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Alright, next order of business is the East Side Flooding Hamlet Milling Project.
Sorry, I'm just trying to catch.
Sure.
Um, and who is the, I'm sorry, do you remember, I can review the recording, if you remember.
Okay, who, who was he, eh?
Yeah. Yeah.
George, Christine, Steve, Karen.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, who made the motion, that's what I mean, I think George made the motion and then who seconded.
Steve.
I did. Okay, got it, all right.
Okay, east side flooding cancel.
Okay, so this was, this is um an existing project that was delegated to us by the mayor, um. An engineering department regarding flooding issues that we've had on the east side of town, um I'm gonna share my screen so everyone can. Uh see this map so we have an idea of what we're talking about, um can you guys see it over there in digital land?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um so it's it's, oh gosh, okay, but you guys can't see it. Uh, gosh. But now everyone can see it. Could you guys still see it, Dan?
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, okay, so. The uh so it's this area of town here, kind of New Harwin Ten Road, uh kind of more like Marcy Drive down to the highway here. There's all these little areas, there's been a lot of flooding issues, um we kind of had a long discussion about. The types of plans we might need to kind of figure out what these flooding issues are, um. I don't know who uh the two of you were, were you were you here for the discussion, I don't remember, okay, so but for Jeremy's benefit. Um, I did you hear about the flooding that was kind of around Clearview Ave this year and? Yeah, so there's so there's a lot of issues because you have these streams that are, you know. Daylighted and then they get piped, daylighted and then piped, kind of all the way through and down and out, and there's been a lot of blockages and flooding and it. It's kind of a combination of kind of poor engineering over the years, um degraded infrastructure and then bigger storms. Which is just kind of wreaking havoc on this part of town, so. Yeah, sure.
If the pipes had no blockages, would there have been flooding?
Uh I don't know, and that's the that's the key question, we really don't, none of us are engineers, our engineering department is not like consultants, they can't dedicate time to studying. The system and what the major issues are, uh there are kind of traps to kind of hold debris back from clogging the pipes up that I know clog really quickly. Um but it's hard to know kind of how that involves a private property, right, you have these streams going to private property, then they hit the public property and then private. It's very complicated.
To the neighborhoods about keeping the.
So we, right, then that's that's exactly where we're getting at, right.
Piping might be too small. All right. And we don't even know if some of the pipe is cracked on the inside there underground, right?
Right, and so the idea is that as a long term goal, we'd like to get our disaster mitigation plan updated for the region. To reflect this as a specific problem area, so that we can apply for funding to actually do a study to have. Licensed engineers come in and like, look at these problems, look at the pipes, look at the the watershed catchment and kind of. How in proposed potential modifications kind of in a priority order, hopefully that could receive future funding. Through FEMA or another organization, so it's kind of like a big long term planning type thing that we're exploring and Karen provided a lot of information on. Um from her connection with the cog, with the Northern Texas Valley cog, um uh on, you know, funding sources and kind of. You know, where we might go with that, and we've discussed started discussions and planning and zoning um about trying to get. Work toward getting those amendments made to the plan.
Would be a state grant, man.
Um, it's, I mean, it could be any number of things, we're not quite. There yet, we're kind of, I I don't know, Karen, do you want to talk a little bit about it, or is it?
Um and it's kind of been a while since I sent you those, I know the one grant that um our cog has pursued for the region is through deep. And it has to do with um climate resiliency, and it's to take some of these problem areas that are in the. The hazard mitigation plan and then study them, you know, take them a step further more to like um. Not just here's a problem area, but here's like a concept solution on what needs to be done. You know, to to rectify the situation and and it's, I think it's like nine different um municipalities in our cog are part of this. The study that we got the grant to do, so we're gonna be hiring a firm, um once the grant is finalized and the firm is going to. Work with us and delve into, you know, and and like this would be a problem area that that they would, you know. Spend some engineering time looking at and coming up with a sort of a high level design. It wouldn't be like a shovel ready design, but anyway, that's the the grant that um we had pursued recently. And it was through deep, um but I'm sure, you know, there's other, there's other stuff out there, um especially. That this whole climate resiliency is such a hot topic now with the super storms and and all the flooding that's been happening, I think there's more money. Becoming available for these types of projects and and some of the money's available for planning and. And design and other money's available for construction, so it's definitely something, I did want to clarify Nate, though, because I think I told you that our. Hazard mitigation plan, each municipality has a separate one and I and I since have found out that's not true, I I think it's very similar to what. Um Northwest Hills has the overall plan and then um, you know, discusses each municipality. Within that plan, some of the the problem areas.
Right, right, and and for those of you don't know, because I don't expect you all to know acronyms, cog is co- uh coalition of governments. Thank you, um, so that's basically our county system, our counties are not administrative units anymore, and so these are. Different shapes than our counties, but they administer higher level planning projects and. Help with allocation of money and that kind of kind of higher level regional planning type thing, so ours is the Northwest Hills Council of Governments. Um and that's pretty roughly Litchfield County, um good news on that front is that that. That cog is getting more staff, um they have a bunch of new positions, I think they're they're adding. Three or four new positions to that cog, so um it'd be really great for getting this one of these, trying to. Get them to update the hazard mitigation plan we already have, or even do one for Torrington, because Torrington is. The largest municipality in the region and um has its own specific flooding issues, um yeah.
Well, uh, what the question, um each owner owns that 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 waterway behind them or is it split? So it's up to them to cut the shrubbage, shrubs or or what vegetation has grown alongside the river then.
And that's a, that, yeah.
Right, right, right.
Why can't, I mean. We're in so much debt, well, it seems like what would suffice would be going to each household. Next to on either side of each of those waterways, talking to them about keeping it clear and then visually, I mean. Yes, an engineer can maybe do a better job with specifics, but those pipes have been there for many years and there weren't no flooding, so. I think we'd be able to visually see whether there's either blockages or if the pipes have some sort of damage that would need to be fixed. And then for those specific pipes, we might be able to, oh, these two pipes have damage, we can hire someone to fix those two pipes. And then for the rest, we could just talk to the landlords, I mean, I have to clean out, I have three drain pipes, my property, I have to clean them out twice a year, it's just something I do. And I feel like those landlords, they might not know, they might, I mean, they don't want their property flooded.
Yeah.
I I think the letters to address. I think some are actually dumping debris into.
People are dumping.
Yeah, so they're.
You take your brush and you put it down the riverbank.
So we're, the the letter is to kind of outline the dos and don'ts of how how to treat the stream.
Right, getting to your point, that's exactly what our short term strategy was going to be, so I have this, I don't know, I circulated it to everyone, this kind of like. This letter, I think, right, I I circulated it to y'all, I don't know if you had any comments on it as far, if you want to read it, actually. You might not, I think that happened before you officially joined and it comes with this.
How, so this is. How many sites are we talking about?
Well, this, I don't think. I wish you could see this lovely map, I'm I'm sorry, I did not, um I didn't get a chance to put a get a digital version, but so this. So this is um our wonderful GIS guy came up with this for us, um to identify for the mailing. He took the stream layer that we have, you can see how it goes underground, above ground, underground, above ground, and um. And he put a buffer on it so that it would catch all potential property owners, because the the streamline isn't really accurate, the property lines aren't really accurate, so it kind of is like a. Overly conservative with pulling people into the mailing, um so all these people in this color would get that mailing.
Because they've been, they've had situations.
No, because they are adjacent to streams. And so what the pamphlet does is it explains uh essentially like. What the responsibility as a homeowner is, it's not really like a responsibility that's formal, but you know, it's not the municipal's. Municipalities responsible to go in and clean out someone's, right, um and then the other thing is if you do have to, like, let's say there's a really large tree and it's. Dislodged a retaining wall or something, you'd have to go to inland wetlands to get a permit to be able to fix that, because you'd need to. Bring equipment into the stream and do changes, so it kind of alerts them to what level of clearing is okay before it triggers a permit. Um, and that's, yeah.
Yeah, it just seems odd, it like, is is this underground between here and here and here and here, is is it jumping?
I I have, I I don't know if that hooks up with the catch basin here and it kind of maybe travels down here, I.
Yeah.
I don't know.
These lines right here is that.
I believe that that's the catch.
The underground, the underground.
I believe so, yeah, that's.
Oh, there's a key, storm manhole, storm gravity mains.
Yeah, so that's what, so that's what these these colors are, they're kind of connecting the pipes underground.
So these could be bottlenecks potentially.
Right, and that's why it's, none of us have the engineering expertise to.
As well as there's debris.
Yeah, but I I went around it, it's not obvious if the pipes are busted and because you're you're looking, you know. Like under the road, you you can't really see that, uh but it was pushing out of the, you know. The the storm drains kind of to the sides of these streets, so it was unusual that the pressure was so. Coming out of storm drains and then going into other people's backyards and wiping out the back.
You know, the other things that I've seen is landscaping companies blowing leaves into storm drain.
Yeah, or into the, where the roads dead end at one of those streams and they just push it over the edge.
And people are throwing their grass clippings into the storm drains, things like that, and then it gets clogged up.
Yeah, or from their properties, yeah, I mean, so like, so the intent is to note is to.
Educate.
Educate people with this, um and then what what's gonna happen is I'm gonna get lots of phones. My number's on there and I'm happy to go out, I mean, that's that's what my job is, so I'm I'm happy to go out and kind of talk to them about. What they would need regulatorily, what, you know, what best practices are, you know, um and try to connect them to resources or do whatever I can in that case. I mean, what'll probably end up happening a lot is people will be complaining about each other, get involved a lot, oh, yeah, I got that good is, he's really bad and then like. They'll follow, but that's okay, we'll we'll just deal with that when it comes.
What's unusual is that it's owned by the property owners, the streams, in this case, you know, a lot of places in town, they're not. Uh so you you have a mix of city owned and private. So you, Steve and I went canvassing for a friend to be counsel, so we went door to door. And we were on the north end, right, uh well, we we checked, we walked by a lot of things, and I mean, it's getting to the point, there's some trees, some some. Besides trees and stuff growing there that have to be cut down.
A lot of debris.
So a lot of stuff, so what are you gonna do, tell the guy you gotta buy a chainsaw? And and the homeowner and get out there and start chainsawing and all that, or I mean, you know, how do you?
I mean, at the end of the day, as a policy, as a wetlands person, if a tree falls in the river. Unless it's clearly obstructing flow, I don't usually go after those people for fill it, for for putting fill in the river, so. Yeah, that's getting into wetlands a little bit, but like putting fill in the river is not permitted without a permit. But when a tree falls in the river in a natural setting, right, where no one's, it's a good thing, right, right, it's a good thing, but in this case, it's clearly. Not, so there's a little bit of a discretion as far as, you know, whether or not it's actually impeding flow, or if it's something that's just. A couple branches that landed in the stream and they're really like.
But I thought it was more than that, I thought we were looking at root structure, etc, too, impeding water flow. I would, on the North of the River, they took everything down, I mean, everything.
Yeah, that's, that's a little bit of a different, yeah.
Okay, but that's. That was to stop flooding, though.
It is.
It is, but you, but there, those are levees, like it's a whole, that's the levy system, that's in response to Katrina.
Okay.
The criticism that they received for not having maintained or forced the municipality to maintain the the levees. And so Army Corps actually worked with us years ago to add trees and shade and rocks and stuff to the river with trout unlimited. To make it better fishing habitat, and then Katrina came along, size nationwide. And they went out and looked at all those levy systems and said they have to be cleared down to, you know, any tree, you know, the. And 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 shrubbery and it has to be done ever so often and. And so that's a, that is a different situation.
But there's multiple steps has to be done to address the streams, because we had some unusual water volume storms this year that caused these flooding problems. And we can't exactly explain what caused those problems, so there's some discovery on that part, but we should probably at least do the basics of. Uh notifying neighborhoods, don't let's get the debris out of your your stream, don't. Obstruct it in any way, you know, th- these are all basic things.
Check and make sure that things aren't clogged, clogged pipes, cracked pipes or whatever.
You said you saw the water coming out of the drains?
Yeah.
So that implies that the pipes were clogged, so.
Or that the, or that they're too small of a diameter for the flow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, I mean, what I included in that letter is that, it's a crazy statistics about like Ja- uh July, I think it was like the. The rainiest July ever recorded and like the third rainiest month ever recorded, you know, period, so it's like. An insane amount of water in a single storm kind of passing through these and it's just they're not built to that standard.
Right, like a hundred year storm is happening every ten years or something now, you know.
Is that what also affects the storm flow is how much impervious surface you have.
Right.
People keep adding, you know, if you you have a a patio in the back and then you expand the patio. You're gonna get more runoff, if you have a, you know, a a, you put in a swimming pool. More impervious surface, you're gonna have more runoff, so that's part of the reason probably those pipes were too small. Is be- because, you know, people have continued over the years to add onto their building, more impervious, add on to. Patios, add on to parking areas, add on to shed, put in sheds, all of that increases your pervious surface. All that increases your runoff.
Pipes get clean, though, when people leaf blow their leaves into the drains and it gets filled and.
I think it just blows out when a big storm happens, or it.
They they've been clogging, we've had one constant clogger in in, you know, a street near me, you call up Public Works, they'll they'll. Clean it up, you see it backing up like that, so in some of these neighborhoods, it's not obvious that, not necessarily. Pipes under the road from the stream, it could be that pipes are clogged between storm drains.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
And then the the waters coming in, uh the neighborhoods have piped in pipes from their yards into the storm drains. Uh in in the past, and I don't think they're allowed to do that anymore.
They can connect into the storm drain, it depend.
I I had thought that the the new runoffs, the yard runoffs would uh not allow that, you'd have to be grandfathered into.
No, we allow, we allow folks to connect, we prefer that they connect into a catch basin, actually, unless they have, uh it depends on the situation, right, like in some cases, they're. Required to retain all water on the site, but then any overflow uh might connect into the catch basin, so there's a lot of, you know, new construction has to. The rule is it has to keep everything on site to be retained and infiltrate, and there's some spill over if there's a big event, so it's not to destroy. Whatever, you know, you built to hold it back, um but but yeah, but all this, I mean, I can definitely look at it again, I mean, uh. I I mean, the way that the language is written in that letter, I mean, if everyone's okay with it, I can go ahead and and start. Start those mailings, um or if people want to review it again, I mean, there's not a huge rush on this project, um so I'd like to make sure we get the language right, if. If folks want to add or subtract anything, I also added a piece on just vegetated stream buffers, because I know that was one piece. Specifically that happened on Clearview, which had a bunch of flooding, um. One, I won't get, one neighbor or one person who had the stream running through it, they cleared all the vegetation off their banks and they just put lawn all the way up to the edge. And when they did that, they destabilized the bank, and so now you have all this sediment that's like. Like basically it's scoured all out completely, so when they get these heavy flows, just as huge amounts of sediment and then it clogs the pipes, so. Yeah, so the idea is that, so I put that in there just because like, you know, vegetation buffers. In general, just hold stream banks together better, um and so of course we want to encourage that.
I um. Thank you for writing a letter, but um my only my only concern would be, the opening paragraph talks about record rain. And I feel like if our goal is to get people to take initiative to clean out the pipes and make sure that they're not leaf blowing their stuff in. If we say that it was a record year, they might go, oh, well, that's why it, that's why it clogged, not because I'm leaf blowing and dropping my grass cuttings. So if we don't talk about it being a record year and you say we. So if we don't talk about it being a record year and you say we've we've had a problem where, you know, pe-. People, residents or or lea- or landscaping companies are are leaf blowing and people are dumping them, I mean, list all the problems that is caused. That are caused by the actual resident. Then it it there won't be that diffusion of responsibility off to, oh, well, it was a one in a hundred year flood. Like, because you know, if somebody reads that, one, they're not probably not gonna wanna read the whole thing. They read the first paragraph and then they go, oh, well, next year won't be as rainy, so we won't have a problem. So that would be my only recommendation.
We should just tell them it's gonna get worse every year.
That was kind of my implicit thing, but I didn't, I didn't think about it from that angle, but it's definitely, that was my like baseline thought, but that's not, that's not.
Just change that paragraph more towards the end and just and and that we expect it to get worse and worse.
Yeah, I mean.
That's good, that's a good idea. At the end of the letter, so they.
The the other thing I'm wondering about is if you wanna put something in about impervious surfaces.
That's what, yeah.
I I would probably add a paragraph.
Well, people.
So I think that if you define it, or you can even have a, I mean, there's there's tons of information. So you can have, um, you could refer them to a good website or whatever.
If I can find a one pager or something on that, um.
But, um, so you know, you could say, you could define that, that the more. Uh, surfaces you have that don't absorb water on your property. Which could be patios, driveways, roofs.
Sheds.
Sheds and even lawn.
We technically as an office don't consider pools to be impervious area because we considered an evaporation pan. But.
It's impervious.
That's Jeremy's policy, so I'm just going with it.
Yeah, that was, that that then you increase the volume and speed of runoff, which which increases flooding problems. So then, you know, I mean, you could click this like something like that. I thought that was pretty light person. Anyone else?
Do you want me to redraft it and circulate it again and then everyone can let me know by email? That that works.
And do we have an answer? Wait a day, we try to get it out, but I like people with a brain.
Uh, yeah, that, I mean, that doesn't sound like a bad idea. Um, I I mean, I'd be happy to have a, I don't know if that's too much multitasking, but a pamphlet stuffing. Um, during a meeting or something like that, if we just like. No, I mean, like while we're talking, like putting. Just because I have to say, it's it's a lot of addresses and a lot of it's pretty mindless. You're just like putting, um. I mean, I don't think it's gonna be that many, you were in it, you were asking how many.
Yeah, is it a hundred houses?
Don't have the. I don't know that I have the actual output. Um, a R G I S person gave it to us as an aggregate sheet, so I would be able to just print that. Um, but I don't know, we're looking at one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. Twenty, uh, twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, I I don't know, like eighty. Eighty letters.
Another thing you might wanna add to that is to say that the city is pursuing funding for a study. That was, does it say that?
As a for, um, maybe I didn't say that.
They're gonna say, well, it was all my responsibility or whatever. So if you just say that this is a stock, you know, that. That, uh, the educational component is basically a stock gap.
Yeah.
To, you know, to buy us time so that we can get funding for a study that and then hopefully funding for. Structural, infrastructural solutions.
Okay, that's good. I kind of alluded to it, but it was very big. I buried it.
And they will tell you.
Well, the idea is that hopefully that we get as much this funded to grants, because there's a lot of money floating around. So I mean, ideally, we. We get it all paid for, um, with some match from the city.
And maybe instead of saying funding, because I meant grants, say grants.
Yeah, I think I, that's the way to word it. Yeah, I said, she's pursuing future fun, uh, future study to plan, you know. So, um, okay, well, thank you all for that. That's helped. I I I don't know, I can't like, I get my own head when I'm writing and so you need to have it reviewed by other people.
Yeah, that's fine. So let's move on to our staff updates. H V A Wildlife Crossing Assessment Training.
Yeah, so we got it, we ended up getting a. Couple of dates for that. Um, I talked to H V A to schedule that training, uh, four thirteen or four six. So that's a a good time. We wanted to do it during that period to kind of get the amphibian migration. Um, again, uh, Jeremy, this is a project where, um, a large regional organization that does conservation, who's a Tonic Valley Association. They mapped a bunch of important forest areas for conservation, identified the linkages between them that are separated by roads. Roads being a barrier that like where there's roadkill and, you know, uh, certain species can't cross, mostly roadkill, uh, in my mind, um, or culverts. Things like that. And so they're having kind of citizen scientists, folks go out and like ground truth and say like, how bad is this crossing really? Um, so they asked that the city, you know, get get involved, they would do a training for us, try to make, and try to make it an event and get people interested just in conservation and. Kind of cool, go out there, see if we can see any wildlife sign, talk about it.
Discuss bringing the club members with the club.
Yes. Yeah, so, uh, and I guess I don't have it as a separate agenda item, but I also spoke with the the high school conservation. Club or environmental club. I went to their meeting with their officers. Um, and they were all very excited and partnering with us on 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 all kinds of projects, um. But this, I brought it up to them and they were like, yeah, we seem positive. It's kind of far out, I think, for their planning horizon. Um, but but they wanna kind of just be, they want, I think the next step is they wanna get members to this meeting. Um, to kind of like talk about what they wanted to. It seems like they're not particularly active. They kinda. They do a little bit of fundraising, which is great. They wanted to fundraise for us, us. So they were like, what can we do? Like, can we get you plantings for your planting projects? And I was like, well, those actually are probably pretty okay, but. But it'd be great to have a conversation with them. Like, they wanted to do like an eco car wash where they use, like, you know. Environmentally friendly washing fluids and it's like a, and then make money on it, stuff like that. So, um, they had a lot of great ideas. Um, but but yeah, they did, they seemed amenable to it, but I think it's more just like, get them to the next meeting and get a representative and start that dialogue directly.
So our earthquake cleanup would be on the twentieth?
Hmm.
I'd rather do the sixth. I'd rather have a little space in between.
Uh, yeah, how does other folks feel about so far out?
If, um, if there's a road in the way, what what do they pose as a solution to?
Well, so in some cases, right, you have a culvert and maybe that's, you know, pursuing grant funding to do a culvert replacement. I know when I worked in New York State. Had more money for this kind of thing and they would have these like assessments and then like, you know, if it was a priority culvert. They would work with Department of Public Works to kind of oversize that culvert or doing a wildlife crossing through it or something like that and it kind of. Kills two birds with one stone because you can deal with flooding issues and, you know, wildlife crossings. Um, there's not a lot, I mean. Other than like kind of conservation planning, so like maybe acquiring properties in the in the area to make that. Quarter wider to give them more opportunity to cross, putting a sign maybe that has a deer on it or something. I don't know, there's like.
But right now, this is they're in their study phase and they're including us with their study. Training us and those, you know, the other, other, uh, actors in the. In the study process, and then this is a multi-state. This is not just Connecticut, this is a multi-state study and a multi-state conservation effort.
Right.
For preserving core forest.
Yeah, and a lot of it is just getting people excited about it. It's kind of a exciting, interesting thing and, you know, you. Start looking at the landscape differently when you're saying like, okay, this is clearly where all the bears are crossing.
But some of the stuff that was pretty, it was like the amphibians, I thought was really interesting where they had. Uh, what did you, they had like people who were volunteers who were intervening out the first, like these rainstorms, right, during mating season?
Yeah.
And basically controlling traffic.
Yeah, oh, it's a nightmare. I mean, I was, I I used to, not a nightmare, it was fun, but like, you know, I remember working for, yeah, yeah, I was, my boss was the woman who runs it.
Okay.
Um, so like, you know, when I, before that, I was working at a nonprofit and they were like. The executive director was like, so you want to get volunteers to go out on a rainy night?
And slow down.
In slow down, speeding traffic to help salamanders cross the road. It's like, you're absolutely not, we're not taking on. Um, but it is, I mean, it was more just like educational and most of the time it happened on slow roads near people's houses and they just got to see something. I don't know if you've ever seen that before, but where there's a vernal pool, you can see like really explosive, like, just like. The road's full of salamanders and frogs, just like crossing on the first warm night. So it's pretty cool. To do that, of course.
People go up watching.
It's so, it's so complicated because you have to like match the weather conditions. You basically have to have a weather watcher who's like. It's maybe happening now, like. I could send you the emails from the person who does it in New York. She's like. Oh, the degrees are this, you know, it's forty degrees and we have a rainy day, so it could be tonight for this part of the region and then this part's not, you know, like they, you know.
I mean, I could see that being a huge interest or something like the environmental club or even science class.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, like, well, yeah, I don't really realize that happened.
We know where those crosses are in like our city?
No, it all, uh, vernal pools are the big, so like if you see a vernal pool, that's like a, in a vernal pool again, that's a. A a temporary wetland that fills up in the spring and then dries out. So if it was to be perennial and there all the time, fish would get in and they would eat all the egg masses of the frogs and amphibians. And so when it dries out, it kind of, they all go out into the forest anyway and do their business and then they come back in the spring. So. Um, it's really identifying where those are. And then once you see those, you look for a road and. You know, you can infer that they're going out into the landscape and have to cross the road.
Do do we, um, ever ta- talk about or do we have anything in the works for conserving forests? Like, um.
Like, like actual land conservation?
Uh, just preventing developments and maybe changing the R zones to, you know, have more land required and preventing. You know, our.
I I I mean, you can speak to that more than I can, because I haven't since you've been here.
Um, yes, we have a plan of conservation and development that identifies. Um, high value, open space. That we eventually would like to obtain. And then, you know, we have, um. Right now, our best bet is grants. We used to have a line item in the budget. That would accrue so that we could purchase land. I think that our budget is like, has just been dwindling over.
We have like nothing.
Yeah, so we, so we used to have money that we were saving for property purchases and that's what what, uh, differentiates us. And from the surrounding rural towns is they actually put funding into their conservation. And a lot of it, I think, in in some ways has like a other side of of keeping the the town the same. You know, like, you know, maintaining the sameness of a rural community. Whereas, uh, you know, we don't have that kind of thrive. Our conservation is really. Um, trying to conserve as much natural. Um, spaces as we can within. Right, and so, um. You know, we don't, we don't really have funding from the city for that, so our best bet is to get different grants and that actually has been an okay avenue. For us.
Grants to like if there's seventy acres that goes on sale, grants to buy it and turn it into a.
Right. So the thing is, is it's very difficult, like one of the ones that was kind of low hanging fruit, but it took. Well over a decade, I think, to go through was the railway, the land, um, behind Kmart.
Right, right, Mountain Avenue Trail, they call it.
So there was a, there was a, you know, basically decommissioned railway that was still owned by a rail company. And, um, it's. It can work as a, as access to. More natural, you know, land and, um, wildlife corridors and there was like a. Piece on the new field road that we purchased, uh, that connects to that. Uh, like a small, a small piece. So that was when we still had like money in our, that that purchase. Um, was within our budget and, you know, had, we had money in our account for that. Uh, the, the rail line, we needed a grant to get it. And, um. We don't have enough money where like. Okay, so like a big chunk of land that is on our plan of conservation and development that we'd like to acquire is at the top of, um, Stone Ridge Drive. Top of like Mountain Avenue, there's. Is it three, how many hundred acres?
It's hundreds of acres with several, over several parcels.
Okay, so but the, but like the one of the, the base it has like, or the top. The pine ridge, it has like a heron rookery, it has beaver ponds, beaver meadows, it's like. Major wildlife habitat, basically right in the center of town.
But like you might not be able to purchase it, but can we? Can we?
If it came up for sale, we wouldn't never have the money to just purchase it and I don't, and grants take a long time.
But like, do we have a zone or or some sort of? Not wanting regulation, but for a specific property like that, can it be marked as a property that's not divisible? You know, you can't. Can't, you can't, uh, have a developer come in and put in a hundred houses.
So a developer owns it.
Oh.
Right now.
Don't, Kim said it's like the idea, you have salamanders up there that's like extinct and, uh, you know, don't we have an area where there is salamander then it's.
Is that across from, uh, Sunnybrook right there or?
Yeah, so well, Sunnybrook is that.
It's contiguous.
It's contiguous and then we have this little piece of municipal land that we actually did an open space inventory of and it's. Incredible, it's beautiful. It's only eight acres, but you can get kind of a flavor for what it's like up there. Um, what was I gonna, uh, oh, so I was looking at the zoning, this, I was gonna pull up the zoning map, um.
And then there's also like a sedge meadow, uh, right on East Main Street, that's on our. Plan of Conservation and Development to.
R sixty is what, three acres or something? They can put a hundred houses in there, so.
They can put a lot of houses in there. So they're not gonna be able to put houses in there. And the reason is, is that right after they purchased it, we got, um, the mayor. To outline where the sewer system, what the boundary of the sewer system was. So that is all ledge up there.
Except for wetlands, which are wetlands.
And it would be, um, prohibitive to try to do septic systems, like it just be so much blasting, it'd be so expensive. That, you know, you you couldn't really do it. So that is why it's still just being held at this moment.
If you said something about the sewers that.
So we have, so at the time, you know, everything goes in these waves and our water treatment facility. Could not handle. Uh, that level of development at that time, like it would be too much for it. And so. Uh, part of the city plan was outlining what the sewer service area is. Is that what it's called? Mike, do I have that right? And so it's a boundary. Anything past this, city's not going to accept, you know, sewer lines. And that one is outside of that.
At the time, is that how it is currently right now?
Well, the way that plan of conservation.
Whether we are handling our water treatment, we are handling our water treatment. So things have happened since then.
Since then, so.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking decades. Like I, I mean, I'm trying to, this was kind of early on in my coming on a conservation commission. So and I've been here twenty years, so in that time, the sewer, this, the water treatment plant has had upgrades. And, but this, the, that line is not changing.
If you wanted to change the line or somebody wanted to propose that, we'll be stopping them from changing that line.
So what they would have to do is they'd have to do an amendment to the Plan of Conservation and Development, which is our guiding plan, because. It it's considered a rural district now, and so to change the sewer service district, it would have to be compatible with the Plan of Conservation and Development. If that kind of proposal came in, it most certainly would get review, referred to to our commission for for review. Well, it's a, I, this is an advisory commission, so. Would just be a recommendation. I mean, you know, there's a balance. You can't tell people you can't do anything with your property. Um, there's things you can do to kind of limit and regulate it, but I mean, in this case, you do have wetlands on the site, so that would also hamper them. I mean, it's probably better suited for, you know, a couple of house lots carved off where it actually makes sense.
So so this is the thing, is is if they can build something, then it's not a taking.
Right.
Like the saying to somebody, you can't put three hundred homes in there and saying to somebody. You can't do anything are two radically different things. Like to say, well, you could have, you could have five homes up there. Um, it's not a taking.
R sixty.
Okay, so. Go in front of zoning and and try to get a condo application?
Well, it would go to, it would go to, it would need a subdivision or I guess it could, if it was a condo, I mean, I, but they would, they would.
Has to be cost effective for them to do it.
A condo would need sewer too, and I mean, these are, these are big projects. I mean, uh, yeah, I I agree. I think the reality is that there's not, there's not likely to. A lot is gonna go in there. If anything, it'd probably be some lots.
Yeah, I would love to have some avenue where we have in the works that if that ever came on the market, that we had some funding source or. A grant source to to grab it.
So what what is, i- is there anything that's more than one acre? R sixty is the the largest?
Yes.
No, no, water set protection zones.
Yeah, but that's still one point three acres, right? It's not, it's not, oh, that that still has the same minimum lot size, right?
No.
No, what, do you remember the minimum lot size for a a W, you mean W P, W P?
Yeah, water set protections are.
Do you remember what the minimum lot size is for that?
Excludes wetlands. I remember that much, so you'd have to do that anyway.
Anyway, it's, it's similar. It just has, it doesn't.
But yeah, but the thing is, you look at this. And the, the parcel in terms of development is, is lousy.
Right.
See, I mean, it's, it's not, I mean, you could zone it for R fifteen. And it would still be lousy and still be very hard to, if not impossible to develop.
Right.
There's plenty of buildable lots that just aren't being built.
The question, I think, I think that the question up there really is that sewer service district question and. I, you don't think, you think even with that?
Nate, you've got, you'd almost need a second road in there, which means you'd have to cross the river or find another way in. Because you can't put many units out there. It's just not a good piece of property to develop. You got wetlands running right through the middle of it. So you'd have to get around that somehow. Do you really wanna cross the Nogatuck? Was it the road? You know?
Yeah, good luck.
Yeah.
Really into bridges.
Yeah, but I mean. You're really spending a lot of money.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's the, yeah, so that's like the plus side of that.
Was the Susan Grossman Trail a city initiative?
That, this, they, they had a, it was um a Winston organization that started it.
No, it was a. No, really, it kept, it got put in as a earmark by the.
Well, that was Obama administration, right?
That was before that, longer.
Yeah.
The original one.
Actually, the China shop was still around, what's his name?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Back there.
Oh, I thought the, oh, but the, the, the asphalt was some kind of grant.
Yeah.
With Obama.
It was sort of complicated.
I remember that Kim was livid, because we got a million, did we get a million or two million, whatever it was, but she was like, maybe we got two million and we were only able to pave. Two miles. She was like a million dollars a mile. Because of like the, with federal money, there was a lot of. Um, regulatory stuff that, that you had to pay for.
But, but there's always the potential to, you know, money's just not here for us now. You could potentially be doing this as a commission to acquire properties connected to other ones to. Make, uh, you know.
Yeah, so I mean, that's in our goals and we are, but right now, are the reality is, is we have to have grant money to make it. Make it happen.
In partnerships.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I, I have another question, a little bit off the beat, but we have several state parks. And um, see, I think you're with Marie Horn.
Yeah.
And, and we toured, we toured the parks. And um, one is Home Meadow and one is Sunnybrook. And I mean, just going into Sunnybrook, the, the uh, the entrance is, is just getting so bad that, I mean. It's really, it's really in disarray. So my, my feeling is, I mean, do we just go to our legislators? We, we tried to put some pressure on Marie Horn or ask her what she could do. It wouldn't be better for the city of Torrington to say, listen, these are. State parks that are in our territory. Is there any way that the state can put some money into them and improve them? Because both of them are horrible. I mean, there, there's, you know, there's getting to be um potholes and. And, and, and it's just, I don't know, what I'd like to know is why at one point they were so prosperous. It was, you know, picnic tables all over and it was ponds and swimming. Yeah. Over by four wheelers.
Yeah.
And, and um.
Well, that one is a, was closed for, I mean, I was sort of surprised that was even open. It was closed for. Um. With New Year's, I think. And I think it just recently was opened back up again. But I just think the state didn't want to put any money into it.
Yeah, I had a feeling if you make too hard of demands that they'd like to give it to you. Yeah, if the city wants it, we'll give it to you.
I don't think they give it to you. I think they just gate it up.
But um.
I was just curious.
Yeah, but it has, again, a lot of uh potential and if you could organize. Bringing back those things, because people used to have events there at John Midado, the pavilion, cookouts.
The whole thing.
Parties, receptions and.
And bring more people, possibly industry. I mean, parks are a nice drawer.
Yeah.
For industry and we need to bring some kind of tax base into Connecticut, into Torrington because our taxes are, are so high, so. That's just something, I don't know, maybe we can think about it more. Maybe it's out of our jurisdiction altogether, I don't know.
Okay, so um, we are at food forest planning.
Um, I will just say on that, um, we, I, I had a potential new parcel that was snatched away from me, so I won't even bring it up.
Really?
Yeah.
So disappointing.
Yeah, that's okay.
Snatched it.
Uh, they're gonna give it to the adjacent landowner. Yeah, the city doesn't.
Want tax.
Well, they don't wanna maintain it. City doesn't wanna maintain it. So, um, we're not even talking about that. I have a meeting with Public Works. This is a, an initiative to get perennial um tree plantings and bush plantings with fruit to kind of, it's like a. Public orchards um that are maintained, um, kind of locally to provide free food.
By a neighborhood.
Yeah, like a community garden, but with perennial fruit plantings.
That's open to all.
Who does it maintain?
Well, that would be part of it would be, yeah, trying to like talk to different neighborhoods where it could work and. See if folks are interested in this kind of thing. And then the Conservation Commission could be involved in some way. Um, we had.
Also, um. Oh, tell me their name. The Northwest uh.
Conservation.
Conservation District.
Yeah, they, they help with.
I think we talked about like master gardeners clubs, forages.
Right, yeah. We can get a bunch of folks involved if we can get a site and the challenge has been getting a site, the city. Um, but I have a meeting with our Public Works and Parks Director for December fifth. So with two parks we have in mind, Burzanyi and Bannon, that was identified by this group in the past, those two parks as being. Located in places where there's kind of underserved communities. They have ample light and kind of room to put a planting like this and. Um, we've done a couple of these food forests type projects, but they've been in like rural parts. Like we have. Small planting of blueberries and hazelnuts and peaches at Bowman Gardens, which is, you know, up on Mountain Road.
And we also had a planting years ago on um University Drive. Which is now owned by, that parcel's now owned by uh Five Points. It was University of Connecticut. And the problem with both of them is they're already out in a rural area where. For me personally, that's like nice to test. But like to find places that are closer access to um pedestrian activity, kids.
Now you talked to the park and rec.
Yeah, so I, I was able to get a site meeting to go out there. So it is, um. Let me get you the exact date. Anyone is, any of you guys are free to come. I would love to have folks here for that. So it is.
Public Works, December the.
And that's the, that's the bed. Sorry, uh. Maybe it's not the bed. I'm gonna have to get back to you on this. That's a. Park, okay, the seventh at one P M. It's a Thursday afternoon. And we're gonna be meeting at.
Oh.
Bannon Street Park first.
So what time?
Uh, one P M.
Okay, um, uh, so we're. Food Forest.
I just scheduled a meeting today at two P M on the seventh, so I'm out.
Oh, no.
All right, so moving on Red Mountain Trail Grand.
Uh, so, yeah, we have a, I have a meeting with S L R on um the third. Uh, of December to go over preliminary concept for that design. So that's that area behind the wall, the Ocean City job lot. Kmart, former Kmart Plaza, where that trail was bought there. And we did the clean, so our, our um Conservation Commission did a cleanup there this fall. Um, we got a grant for, I don't know, four hundred thousand dollars to develop it into a linear. Rail trail park to try to kind of connect Sioux Grossman up with um Nogatuck River Greenway. There's still a lot of gaps, but it's a big piece that the city owned and we were able to get grant funding to do that, so.
Park for people.
Yeah, it would be like a rail, like you know, like the Sioux Grossman, how it's paved rail, rail trail. This would be, I think, crushed, don't respect it for, but it would be. On adjacent or on the old railroad bed, kind of going out to the Nogatuck River has a nice little view out of it and then back. It's kind of a. Just a dead end section, but you could park in the Ocean State Job Lot parking lot and, and it's about, I don't know, mile there and back, so. It's, it's, and it's a cool spot back there. It's just cool to actually see there. And the idea is eventually. It does connect with the new bike lanes on Prospect Street, uh, yeah, Prospect Street. And then it goes. You know, you can connect over to um Franklin Plaza and kind of, uh, if you've ever been on the Nogatuck River Greenway Trail, it kind of goes south there. Um, along the water, so, um. Uh, so yeah, so we're, we're working away. Um, we're gonna bring in the public, especially the budding neighborhoods. Um, when we get a preliminary concept, kind of like present to them and try to get feedback on what they might, you know, wanna see in their neighborhood.
All right, open space inventory.
Uh.
Doing so well. We are really doing well. I am so proud of us.
Me too. We had, we had, we had a great site visit. We, we saw two properties last week. One of them was right next to uh the dam, what is Stillwater Dam, on Stillwater Dam Road there. Um, it's a little piece that looked like it was a throwaway from a subdivision. Um, but it could be a really cool little loop trail and access for fishing, if you can get maybe a Boy Scout troop, or we were kind of throwing ideas around for that. Um. The Rock Stars, yeah, getting a volunteer trail group. I mean, it's just an idea, but we're gonna log it into our. Inventory and then I think once the inventory is done, we can kind of like lay it all out and look at what maybe our priorities are. And we have a really good idea of where we might wanna pursue projects after we see them all kind of against each other. Um, and then we saw another kind of city-owned um land that was taken or. Deeded to the city during the flood of fifty-five or after the flood, you know, area where there's probably condemned houses. Um, where Public Works is kind of using to dump stuff. So that was a little less nice, but uh. But we logged that information as well and we're cranking away. Um, so I don't know if you wanna do another visit or if you wanna, we can hold it off until next year. It's, we're getting to the kind of even more questionable weather time. Um.
What are we doing? December's kind of iffy. December is iffy. Maybe we resume again in March.
Is that piece of property, was that originally supposed to be part of the Stillwater Pond uh condo project? That you're talking about? And it was really the old Brass Mill Dam? Used to go through the Brass Mill Dam Road before they called that whole thing Brass Mill Dam Road?
Um, maybe, maybe that's. Yeah, at the very end, and it was paved, yeah. So that's the history on that. Yeah. Um. But yeah, so I mean, we can resume, I'll just say resume in March. So we'll do it during one of our meetings. We'll set that new date. Um, great.
Yeah, we set the date in the February meeting for March. Okay, and the natural resources inventory.
Always slowly working on it. Whenever again.
All right.
Can I, can I uh offer one suggestion as well? We have a meeting scheduled for the fourteenth of December. Um. I don't know.
You wanna cancel it?
I mean. I do, yes. But everyone else can discuss it. I, and I will be here if everyone wants to be here. Um.
Uh, we tend to cancel in the same meetings.
I thought the next one was, I'm just looking at the. Oh, the next one was in January.
From that one, yeah. We, we had technically in the books, we have one more for December, but we are doing this meeting late as well.
We won't have it now?
No, I, I, I mean, generally, there's not much going on in December. There's not much we can do in December, so. We tend to cancel the meeting. And just enjoy the holidays. So do we need to have a motion for that? Can I, actually, don't I?
I think we can, we can just cancel. I'll just, we'll do the notice.
Meeting.
We, make it a so.
Or, yeah, we can get together at a far.
I'll grab that, uh, if you don't mind.
Okay, so, uh, George, we were talking about. Um. About creating, so one of the things that, that we often do at the end of the year is kind of figure out what some of our goals are. For the Conservation Commission for following year. So what I would suggest is the, and this is open to anybody. Um, is to send in Nate, send in to me via email what, what. Projects you are interested in pursuing as a conservation commission. So if that is partnering with the. With the state somehow, um. Different parks or pressuring them, or I don't know what, or gathering information on why they're allowing them to go to Helen Hand Basket. Then you can put that suggestion in and we can look at how to move forward on it. That's true for anybody.
Yeah, and like, uh, we're talking about pesticide application, like educational campaigns or something like that, like.
Learn a little bit more about what we're doing, because I know there's a lot of weed control on the sides, sides of the road, uh, winter road treatments, so just, what are we using?
Right, and I think that's, I mean, that's something that I can easily, we get a list of things, I can bring that to Public Works and, and Street Department and see.
It's a version of roundup, I think.
Well, we can.
Not gonna lie, scares me a little.
Well, we can definitely, like, if you wanna put together something like, I mean, again, this is open to everyone. Put stuff together, we can talk about it and all.
Yeah.
I guess, would, do you wanna just have like a, uh, an item on our January agenda for like year planning?
Yeah, 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 we could do that. Okay, so we need a motion to adjourn.
A motion.
Second. All right, all in favor? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good work. Nice knowing you, Steve.
Happy holidays.